Uh, six o'clock, like to call an order. The East Dundee Village Board Meeting dated Monday, February 20th, 2023. Catherine, can you call a roll?
Trustee Mahoney will not be here. Trustee Coonty?
Present.
Trustee Britton?
Here.
Trustee Saviano?
Here.
Trustee Tribber?
Here.
Trustee Sodder?
Here.
And President Lyman will not be here.
Okay, uh, we will. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. All right, that brings us to public comments. Is there anybody that would like to address the board on any topic? This is agenda or non-agenda items. No comments. Hearing none, we'll continue to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the First Amendment to to the employment agreement for the village administrator and to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated January 23rd, 2023, and to accept the warrants list in the amount of $324,472.2.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Catherine?
Trustee Coonty?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
All right, moving on. We have our regular agenda items. Do you want to start with the motion for item A?
I will make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the East Dundee zoning ordinance to add a new special use in the B3 service business zoning district for indoor malls.
Second.
Okay, um, this went to the plan of zoning and they, I believe, made some changes to the wording of the amendment. Did we incorporate those in?
We did incorporate those in there in the ordinance that is attached.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this ordinance?
So, it's my understanding each vendor is going to have a hard enclosure and a hard partition.
Well, so, this is, this is just to add, um, to the zoning ordinance, add a new special use for indoor malls. So when we get to the next item, that'll be approved in a special use.
Gotcha.
And we can get into those details.
So this is just defining a new area of like indoor malls so we can define what the rules and regulations are for that, but not really assigning it to anyone, just?
Correct. This is a new category inside of the existing zone for a special use, uh, for a special use permit for indoor malls. Yes, that's exactly right.
Because it is already zone retail.
It is.
So, this is for that.
Well, this, just to clarify, I think, just on that, this, the first ordinance is creating a text amendment that would allow this as a special use in that district. And so that would be generally applicable going forward to anyone to apply for a special use permit. It's not specific to this, um, the indoor mall that's coming up today requesting a special use. So the text amendment would just be like any other text amendment to the end, amending the zoning ordinance for the special use. And then that would allow for this to be a special use for anyone going forward.
Okay.
Any other questions on it? Catherine?
Trustee Coonty?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
No.
And Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
Okay, next item. Before we make this motion, I would, um, I would suggest, or I don't want to dictate, but, um, that we make the motion with all of the staff's conditions and then we can go through item by item and decide which ones we would like to strike or add. Um, after we, we can amend the motion to do that rather than, because there's two different proposals.
Yeah.
So we would make that motion by saying what's written here and specifying with staff's provisions that are in the back of the register.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance granting a special use permit for an indoor mall for the property located at 535 Dundee Avenue, East Dundee, Illinois 60118, portion of PIN 0326227007, located in the B3 business district with the staff recommendations option.
Second.
Um, so, I take it you would like to address the board?
If I may, thank you. My name is Dean Shapiro. I represent the applicant and thank you for allowing me to just offer a couple of words here. Um, we're very encouraged by the plan commission's recommendation on the 2nd of February and hear on that recommendation. We're certainly available for any questions. We get offered a presentation. I'm sure you've read that, read about the presentation. So unless you have any questions, um, I would defer the presentation. But, um, wanted to let you know that we did receive the staff report and the proposed ordinance with this 15 conditions. All of those conditions are acceptable. But I would like to clarify just one, if I may.
Yeah.
Two, actually.
Okay.
So... Uh, number 14. I'm looking at the ordinance number 14. Each unit shall provide a consistent structure method to secure the entries and exits to the individual units during closed or off hours, such as entry door, entry doors or overhead doors with locking mechanisms. I think I'll pass out these photographs so they'll give you a sense of what I mentioned. When we were before the plan commission, this issue came up and there was an inquiry or question about glass doors. And I mentioned at that time that putting glass doors on each one of the 90 booths would cost about a million and a half dollars. It's a lot of money in addition to the four million that the landlord owner is going to put into the mall. So I asked for some consideration in that regard. What the thought would be here is not to put in glass doors, but to put in, I, I will call them very rugged and thick, um, tarps that lock. So there is a locking and security mechanism to those tarps that would go through each one of the vendors, each one of the businesses. So I wanted to clarify that. The other thing I wanted to clarify is number 10, litter patrol. Um, we talked about that on the 2nd of February. It asks for litter patrol daily. Now, everyone's going to pick up their litter, but if it, if this means garb, a former garbage collection contractor or garbage contractor, right now, there's a contract for three days a week. And, uh, and we would hope and expect that that would be satisfactory. If it isn't, then, um, ownership is willing and happy to increase that contract to five days a week. So I wanted to just address those and certainly have, am available for any questions. In short, this is about 63,000 square feet of a 90,000 plus or minus mall that's been dark for so many years, as you, as you know. So it gives a really great opportunity to fill two-thirds of that space up, bring life back to it and bring about $4 million of improvements by ownership to that mall that I think we can all agree desperately needs it. In addition to that, the sales tax revenue is pretty healthy. Sales tax revenue that don't come from, from the use of the indoor mall. Tenant is here, ownership is here. We're happy to offer any other comments if you might want.
I'm not understanding how these lock. I, I, I'm just, just looking at the photos. I'm not understanding.
If you want to talk about it?
Yeah, sure. So basically there'll be like garden holes on the side and they'll, they'll be hanging like about the doors, property owner. Um, there'll be, uh, like a curtain-like structure made out of like a 90 mil tarp, almost like a modern day roofing. Then they slide back and forth and then there'll be something that holds it on the side. And then there's like garment holes on the side where you could actually put locks.
Okay.
So there'll be two locks for each?
I think it was four.
Four locks for each?
Okay. Key locks or does that matter?
What was that?
What kind of locks are you expecting?
Key locks, like, or combination, whatever.
So you want?
Yeah, padlock.
Padlock.
Either key or combination.
This is in addition to... I mean, this is just really to prevent people that would be inside of this mall during off hours, most likely authorized to be there, um, going into somebody else's store.
I think that's right.
Because what I understand is that the, the store itself will have its own level of security preventing entrance into the entire mall, you know?
That's correct. There's going to be cameras. I think we testified, um, on the side, cameras inside and outside. There will be, um, uh, uh, security personnel.
Three security guards on the outside.
Three guards on the outside.
We reached out to police department, offered to give them a live feed to the camera system on the outside. It's a system that they are familiar with.
So to your point, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Rosa Leal and I'm the administrator, owner of the Elgin Mall Corp. Um, just wanted to also point out that, um, not most, but, um, a good percentage of the owners do have their own camera system.
So these curtains would only be seen after hours, not by people shopping? Because this is, once it's all closed and shut down for the evening, just to show no tampering from one owner to the next?
That's correct. That's correct. So you have, I would call that more internal.
Yeah.
And then you have front, the, the, obviously the front door is going to be secure and then you have cameras and guards. So it's going to be pretty tight.
Right. And then the, the trash pickup, um, I noticed that, that it's every day wanting trash to be picked up. Is that just, um, to give us a vehicle of saying, uh, there's a bunch of trash in the parking lot? We need it picked up and it's supposed to be up every day? Um, is there, uh, is it fine to just have staff at the end of the night pick up trash that is in the lot or?
Thank you, Trustee Sodder, because I wasn't quite sure.
I'm not.
I'm not either. And if we could get some clarification on what the intent of that number 10 and the condition was, that would be helpful.
Before we go on to that, can we just talk about what we were just on for a second? Which was the, the curtains? Like, the, the reason that staff added the recommendation was because what we understood from the applicant was that some of the businesses may have different operating hours. And so some people who are, uh, you know, at the mall will see those curtains closed during shopping hours because not every store will follow a uniform set of hours. Is that correct? Right. So you said somebody wouldn't see that, but somebody would actually see it.
And are these curtains, can you just with an exacto kind of slice into it? If somebody has their booth closed in the back corner, but the store is open?
I would say that it can't really do it with the scissors. Um, it would take some effort to do that. I mean, I'm not going to lie, I mean, I, I kind of look at it, uh, if someone wants to get in your house, even though you may have alarm system, they can still get in your house. So if someone really, really wanted to cut the curtain, they could really, they could do it. So I'm not going to say they're impenetrable, but they're kind of thick. And, and that's what they are. One would think that even given all this, along with the three security guards, there should be a level of confidence in terms of the security.
Um, I also want to mention that as of right now, we haven't had, um, any of the vendors coming to us, um, to report that there was any type of theft in their, um, in their stores. Um, I think that if that would have been the issue, uh, we would have already, um, had taken care of doing something different, uh, with locking. Uh, we like the idea, uh, just so that they feel safe. But to be honest with you, we do have security guards, uh, walking, uh, in the hallways regularly. So, um, it's constantly, uh, being watched. So I, we, like I said, we haven't had any issues with that.
Can I ask you a question? Um, what did you guys consider it, uh, a hardship? If we were to say within three years, you put up something more substantial than the curtain? Would we give you a three-year grace period, something like a gait?
So I'm going to, I'm going to answer for...
Yeah?
Three years is a long time. So what could be happening there in three years, they could be thrive. They could be a really, it could be game busters, but it may not be. So I, I think it's hard to answer that question. What we're willing to do is to come back here annually for a report, to see how we're doing, um, to let you know how we're doing. But if, uh, if, if for some reason something happens unfortunate, I don't want to say, yes, we'll do it in three years because then that just puts us in a box. But we will be happy to come back, give you a report on sales, give a report on security, give a report on whatever you want us to do on an annual basis and we can take it from there.
Okay. Fair enough.
And if you wanted to add that as a condition, we have no objection.
Okay.
Um, and also there may be some stores that are thinking they're going to use, um, like glass fronts. So, um, that's something that we have right now at the, um...
What were they?
Uh, glass fronts?
Oh, glass fronts.
A store, yeah.
Their storefronts?
Yeah, storefronts.
Insurance office has their current, like, some guys will pay for it.
The, the beauty shops?
If they want one.
Yeah, if they want one. Yeah, that's something that they've paid out of their pocket. So that's something that can be offered or, you know, that could be done as well if the vendors want to pay for that.
And a tenant option?
Yeah, that's a tenant option.
Would there be any fire code issues of flammability of a curtain versus, um, fire retardant walls? Or is that material, I assume?
Uh, fire to curtain is not waiting or expressing any concern that way. Okay, are there any other questions for, um, the representatives here?
Can you run me through storage for vendors, what they'll typically do? Um, you know, with excess products, things like that? Will they keep them off-site, keep them in-store? Nothing will be outside of the store, correct? It'll all be?
Um, yes, so I do see that, um, and one of the conditions is that no, uh, storage on the, in the hallways or anything that's for sale. Um, we talked to the vendors, they have agreed and we actually like that idea as well because we can enforce it now. We're going to tell them this is part of the conditions now and we totally agree with that. We want to leave the, uh, hallways clear so that, um, it's easier for the customers to walk through and not have to trip over anything like that, yeah.
But are the, the question was, are the, are the vendors storing their inventory off-site or is it somewhere else in the facility or?
Um, that's going to depend on how much space they have. Um, as far as, um, myself, um, when we order our products, we do keep them on-site. But I have, um, I have a storage space that I, uh, made for, for that specifically. Uh, some, um, of the vendors, I do know that they bring their stuff on a daily basis as they need it. So it, we have it both ways.
Thank you.
We did have the question about the number 10.
The trash?
Yeah, I can answer that one. We currently use Apollo, is a company that, that's called Porterin. They come out three days a week currently and the max five days a week is, because they refuse to work Saturday and Sundays. So we use them on a couple of different properties that we have. Basically an hour to two hours spent on each property. I think on this property, we installed seven garbage cans or nine garbage cans. When the bag is filled more than halfway, they pull it, put a new garbage bag and then just walk through the whole parking lot and pick up all the garbage. There was something added in there for 25 feet north and south. For us, it's a liability issue. I reached out to them and they don't want to, you know, do anything on the street when south is 72 and north is a city street.
Okay.
What did that 25 feet north and south, what was that referring to?
So just within the, um...
The public right-of-way?
The center?
Immediately adjacent?
Caitlin, can you clarify for us? It says, when it's, when it refers to the property, is it referring to just their unit or the entire mall? Shopping center?
The property is, uh, referring to the whole 535 Dundee Avenue property.
So extending 25 feet to the north and south just covers?
It just was meant, um, just to cover, you know, when trash blows around in an area, just to create a bit of a buffer room. Um, and that was the, the idea behind that, just, you know, so if the garbage from the parking lot is going into the, this sidewalk and streets and, um, right-of-way and things like that, that they would be responsible for cleaning it up.
So I think this is one of those things, it's just common sense. But if this garbage line, we'll pick it up.
We do 507 to 581, our family. So we do everything, not just this building, but everything that's our property.
I could tell you I, I do a river cleanup every year. On Fox River, we have a, um, a bar, um, by the river that I fill up three contractor bags every year full of trash from their parking lot. I think if you guys pick up every three days, uh, you're not going to have a lot of garbage blowing around. It's going to be picked up, you know, I would imagine so.
I, I do have a slight concern about it, not Saturday and Sunday, though, if those are the busiest days. Like if the trash bags or like the outdoor trash containers that you have are full, those, you know, what will happen on Saturday and Sunday if, if the company is not going to pick up?
So at the current location for the Elgin malls, we have 14 garbage cans a week, recently to 21. And that took care of the problem.
Okay.
So pre-COVID, they did work Saturdays, they never worked Sundays. And now it's just, hey, if you want to find somebody else, find somebody else. But they're good at what they do and they do a lot of properties in the area.
No, that's fair, as long as it's, you know?
If, uh, one suggestion would be if you didn't want to go forward with, uh, daily, you could, you could amend it to be during operating days. So instead of seven days a week, it would be four days a week if they operate four days a week.
Right.
Okay.
Because even though this particular company that you use doesn't work Saturdays and Sundays, that's not the only company that exists that could potentially pick up the trash.
Fair enough. Do we want to go through these line by line and give our thoughts? If we want to strike them or keep them or add others? Let's start. No tenant storage displays shall reach above the wall line of each individual tenant's unit.
Yes.
They've agreed to that. I have no problem with that. Does anybody have a problem with it?
No.
Property must conform the zoning ordinance requirement for the B business district. That's just asking them to follow the law. I think that's wrong.
Seems assumed, yeah.
Yeah. Operation of the special use must be in compliance with all other local, state and federal laws that apply to such uses. Again, I think that's just stating the law. All building code and life safety requirements of the property must be satisfied and approved by the village. I think that's again is a housekeeping issue. Does anybody have any objections to any of these? I don't mean to go too fast, it's just, I think these are...
We'll holler if we have a problem. I think they're generally fine.
The exterior buildup of each tenant's unit must have uniform and consistent frame style of construction with built walls. Curtains and other non-sturdy materials shall not be used to separate units. So, I mean, that would be in between the units, not necessarily the front door, right?
Right.
So, okay. Uh, each unit shall operate with a point-of-sale terminal or other electronic cash register that records all transactions occurring at the unit.
I did have a brief question about this one, actually. Chief, you had made a recommendation in your letter about, I highlighted it and it's lost in this packet, um, about the drop bags. Did, do you have any comment on that, just about the cash drop, right?
Right, I had just mentioned about if, if it is predominantly a cash-driven business, that there's some kind of cash handling, uh, system in place or whether or not that they arrange anything with, with their, their individual banking and so forth. And while you gave me the floor, I just wanted to mention something briefly. Uh, I know that, uh, I'm anticipating you're going to want a report from me in a year. I'm just guessing. What I would really appreciate if it was potentially possible, and I, I talked over with Chris about making sure that individual units have addressing, whether, you know, because I can't... Otherwise our, our report writing CAD system, 9-on-1 system will just report on 535 Dundee Avenue. So just like an apartment, unit X, unit Y, unit Z, you know, whatever. Just something so that way each individual store is an individual address for us to be able to report on.
Man, I see you nodding back there. Would you mind?
I think that's a great idea because, um, I think that will tell us if there are any trouble people in between us, you know, amongst us. So that's a great idea.
Thank you. And could you just, um, speak briefly to the, like, the, if you'd talked to chief about the, um, cash systems in place or, you know, if, if the tenants had processes in place to handle, you know, the bags and things like that?
Um, I do believe that each, um, vendor has their own system.
Okay.
Um, I don't know exactly, um, you know, when they leave to make their deposits, but I do know that each vendor has their own system. But just, I wanted to ask a little bit about the, uh, point-of-sale and the, uh, so this is section three of the conditions. It states that each unit shall operate with a point-of-sale terminal or other electronic, uh, reg, cash register that records all transactions occurring at the unit.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, most people do have some kind of, uh, system already in place. Um, and with the new lease, uh, that we are going to give to the tenants, we, I'm going to make sure that that is, um, listed, um, as part of the agreement that they will be using, uh, one, well, the, the system with the, the cash registers and the point-of-sales. But, um, I don't know how we will manage or, uh, or police that. I, I don't understand how you guys would want us to deal with that part.
I think the, the concern that was brought up was just if there's cash drops where at the end of the day, cash was being moved either to a bank or an other facility or that there would be processes in place to ensure that that was, you know, safe and reliable.
It's safe and, it's safety and security, I think, for, for your tenants, you know?
Yeah.
And that could be handled by the security as well, if you've got security on site.
We have security.
Right.
Um, at the end of the night, uh, once we close the building, uh, securities walk outside with us and wait until we all are in our cars. So they do, um, watch, um, watch out for that. And then we have, uh, securities that are also, uh, outside of the building recording, yeah.
Well, I feel like recording all transactions is also to make sure that it's accurate as far as accountability, accounting, taxes and all of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So something, some sort of point-of-sale and not just like someone handed me some cash and I'm just running off of it. Like, how are they recorded and monitored? Do you have that answer?
Um, I, as I mentioned, right now, um, I don't know exactly how each vendor is, uh, keeping track of their sales. Uh, we do have, uh, point-of-sales. I know that a lot of our vendors do offer the credit card systems. They do have registers, but, um, I don't know exactly how they are reporting. Uh, when we took over, uh, back in August, we went through the process of, uh, asking everybody to present, uh, their, um, their retailer's, um, taxes to make sure that they were, uh, reporting or that they had the retailer's tax ID number. So that really was, um, something we took some time to do as well as our licensing. So I believe that most of them already have that in place.
Because that's just, it's with the expectation of a certain amount of tax revenue that's going to come to us, so we need to know there's accountability there.
Yes, and that's something that we will also monitor very closely. Anyone that wants to come in new, that has, that wants to take a space, we will make sure that they do comply with all those things.
Yeah, I just want to add, on our end, so I manage this store here as well as my mom, and we use a software called LightSpeed, which is very common across the industry, and my brother has a store there as well, he uses that as well for inventory and point-of-sale.
So is that something you can encourage or require vendors use?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think something like that in place would be really great to be uniform.
Yeah, it's very inexpensive and very normal in the retail industry.
And to address your concern, I also think this one is fairly easy for staff to monitor. So I don't have any concerns from an administrative perspective on whether or not this will be difficult for us to ensure is in place. So, you know, if they're encouraging their tenants and providing information about options from our side of things, I think we can pretty easily enforce it.
Seven, signage shall be displayed above the entrance to each unit. Each sign will have a maximum signage area of twenty square feet per sign, per individual unit. No permit fees are required for said signs. So is twenty square feet enough for you guys, I guess is my question? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Eight, all operating units slash individual businesses must be licensed with the village in accordance with chapter one-ten general licensing provisions of the municipal code. So each one just needs to have a business license for East Dundee. The owner and all subsequent owners of five thirty-five Dundee Avenue can, oh-three-two-six, two-two-seven, oh-oh-seven, shall be subject to chapter one-nineteen rental license of the municipal code. I do wonder what this is. Is this not just essentially a double tax? I mean, if we're saying they have to pay for a business license, but also for a rental license, are we saying that they have to have a rental license for every tenant?
It's part of our village code that have any, any, any business, property owner that leases space pays a licensing rental fee on an annual basis.
Okay, so is it for every tenant they have?
Every, yes, every tenant.
And that's the village code? Ten, litter patrol shall occur at least once per day and shall remove any litter on the property and in the public right of way immediately adjacent to the property and extending twenty-five feet to the north and south. I personally feel like this is something that certainly no other business in this entire village has put on them. If we, if they're willing to do it three times a week, I think that that is better than, it'll be the cleanest lot in this village. So I would, I would say we should change that to three times a week, and I would strike the extending twenty-five feet to the north and south just to prevent any problems. That's how I feel about that.
I'd be fine with operating days, but, because that's really when they should be responsible for, but that's what I would say about that. I don't think it needs to be every single day of the week, but I think it should be operating days.
If they're operating on the weekends and the garbage is on the weekends, then that's what, are they?
Yeah, and I think if it gets professionally picked up three times a week, just like a visual spot check is what will end up happening at the end of the night that wouldn't require contracting another person to clean up the whole lot again. So it seems like operating days is fine and probably could be just done by staff.
If I could just jump in here for a second. It says litter patrol, operating days is fine, doesn't say you have to have a professional contractor. So if that's understood, that litter patrol, it doesn't necessarily equate to garbage contractor. Operating days, that's something more comfortable.
Absolutely, got it.
All right, so we would change once per day to, once per day during operating hours, operating days. Does that, does that work?
Could say litter patrol shall occur on operating days. Once per day on operating days, yeah.
Once per day on operating days?
Are we okay with striking this twenty-five feet extension that is not on that property?
I just want to say one thing, when the company changed from not doing Saturday, every shop to eight companies, and we're set up for Sunday. So I have problems, is that what they want to find?
Well, if the, if the tenants want to pick the trash up because they see it when they leave for the night.
And that's an insurance issue for me as a landlord and for them, go outside of the box and go for that. It opens up for me as a liability. Chris could probably vouch for me, every time it's ever Sunday, hey, there's a mattress in the back of the building, there's a couch in the back of the building. Those are my responsibility. Do you mind if you, yeah, sure, please.
So, I mean, I know it's not Chris's job to police the garbage. When I find things on my neighbor's properties, I usually tell Chris, hey, there's a couch here, there's a couch there. So we had that, I drive the property two, three times a week myself. If Saturday or Sunday is a labor issue. I don't mind doing it five days a week, Monday through Friday. The property probably looks better in the last six months than it has in the last ten years.
Right, I just, you know, if we're running into, we have agreement from the, so it's, you know, what are we, what are we saying here?
Well, he's saying that he's not going to let them pick it up because it's a liability issue for him, it's not their property, it's his property. So he wants to get his contractor in there, but they can only do it three days a week on the weekdays.
No, they could go up to five, and I'm willing to go up to five if that makes you guys happy. I don't think it's needed up to that, but Saturday, Sundays, you know, and they come out, they come out real early in the morning, so Monday morning they'll be out before nine AM.
Then five days a week, not weekends.
Yeah. Okay.
So, litter patrol shall occur.
Thank you.
At least once per day, five days a week.
I do want that to be, you know, this is something we're going to have to pay attention to, because if it's crazy on Saturdays and Sundays, it's going to be a problem.
Yeah, it's subject to review.
Right.
All this is subject to review, apparently, so we're going to do a review in a year, build that into here.
Well, also just to point out, you know, as we read the other conditions, that you stated they just have to follow the law or the codes and things. And there are, in the village code, you know, nuisance provisions, they can't, no property can just have garbage everywhere, and so, you know, things like that are.
I think that's true.
Are a problem, then those are technically, you know, not in explicit terms, but would be covered by just the more general terms of the ordinances.
Are we okay striking this twenty-five feet outside of their property?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody not want to do that? Eleven, patrons, employees, and tenants of the facility shall not loiter or congregate on the public sidewalk in front of the property or in the immediate vicinity. I mean, is this, I mean, could this just be covered under our already existing loitering laws that we have? Or do we need to have this? I don't know what this feels like. What is the concern here?
We have a business that operates a little bit further to the north of this that has an issue with this.
But this wouldn't be covering that business, would it?
It does not cover that business, but because we have experienced and encountered issues with businesses that have this issue, it just makes sense to add it to this one, but, you know, Chris can address if there's other means within the code to address it as well.
Well, the term public sidewalk, that's not a public sidewalk.
Right.
It's private property there in front of the. So that would be just one thing that you might want to remove, just loitering in front of the property or in front of the building, however you want to word it, but.
This, we're talking, you guys, or whoever put this in here is talking about the sidewalk that's immediately in front of the storefront, not the sidewalk out by Route seventy-two or twenty-five, I would imagine, right?
Right. We don't, we don't have sidewalks out there either.
We don't even have sidewalks.
Just to clarify that.
Go bust them out. Okay, there could be an issue with the term congregating.
I mean, I don't know, if some people go jet or whatever, they're congregating, so if there's, maybe to your point, if there's already something in the municipal code regarding loitering that would cover this issue. Just a thought. I mean, generally, I said before, we don't object to any of the conditions, I just don't want, I'm trying to anticipate unintended consequences.
Absolutely. Do we know about, anybody, anybody on staff know about the code?
Well, I think the chief can address the loitering issue.
He's been volunteered to address it.
So from the loitering perspective, as was mentioned before, there's nothing we can do on the public way. You know, people have a right to actually loiter on the public way as long as they don't inhibit somebody from passing through if there was a sidewalk there. When it comes to the sidewalk that's adjacent to the property, generally, when somebody would call in a complaint about loitering, it would be the property owner complaining about a third party. So I'm not sure how the board would want to try to navigate the issue with holding the property owner responsible for a third-party loitering there.
For, for who essentially they would be calling to remove, and they're actually the one getting in trouble.
Right, so at that point, you're talking about a trespass that either could be the tenant, if they're in control of the property right in front of their, what they're renting, or the property owner would be calling for some type of trespass complaint, at which time then the police would respond, give proper notice and have the person, the individual leave the premises, and then if they return, then they would get arrested for trespassing. But that's about.
I mean, if I get off of work at five and I'm standing out front waiting for a ride, I don't want to be, you know, necessarily harassed because I'm loitering.
Right, and I also don't plan on accosting a Girl Scout selling cookies in front of the court.
That's a good point, because they do get up in front of Jewel and do that all the time, and now that would be illegal. So I don't know, I'm going to say personally, I would strike this.
Strike eleven.
Strike eleven, does anybody object to striking eleven?
No objection.
No objection.
Twelve, kiosks display, displays items or materials for storage and or sale are not permitted in the aisles or halls or walkways of the property. Everybody's agreed to that? Thirteen, tenant quantity capped at ninety individual businesses' tenants during the first twelve months after opening. Apartment can reapply at that time for additional permitted individual businesses' tenants if parking has sufficient capacity as observed over the first twelve months.
This is to clarify the parking issue, I think, because we are, we are lacking the right number of spaces for the number of tenants. And I, I did notice, I thought in the P and Z packet, it was capped at eighty, is, it was bumped up to ninety? Oh, did I just totally miss?
There was, there was some confusion there, I think in the application material, this is at eighty, but then the report's at eighty-seven, and then I urged ninety.
Okay.
So I think that's how that.
Okay, that's, I just saw so many numbers, I needed to make sure, okay, that's fair.
Well, I guess my question then is if we do have a parking problem that arises from this, are we then, we wouldn't be permitted to then say, oh, you have to go back down to eighty now, right? I mean, they have ninety at least if, with this.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And you also have none, none of the balance of the mall leased out. So when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, it was, I think the peak number of spaces was one ninety and the total number of, peak number of, yeah, trips was one ninety and the total number of spaces, three ninety-four, leaving about two hundred spaces for the balance of the tenants. So at that time, there was a certain level of comfort that that was okay, and if there was a problem with future tenants, they'd have to come back, seek a variance. So I think that was kind of how the ninety got back to.
I mean, part of this is property owner.
Right, exactly.
You know, it's, you have a bunch of empty businesses or empty spaces, so if those get rented out and require parking spaces that would take up from an existing tenant, you know, are you prepared to deal with that, or?
Or come and seek a variance.
Okay.
One or the other, yes. That's, that's what else.
Okay. I mean, some of this responsibility is on the property owner, too.
Okay, so we're going to just leave that as is?
Yeah.
Okay. Fourteen, each unit shall provide a consistent constructive method to secure the entries and exits to the individual units during closed and or off-hours of business, such as entry doors or overhead doors with locking mechanisms. Again, I mean, my wife and I like to go to antique malls, they have a hundred different vendors there, and there's nothing separating them at all. They do not lock up at night, they lock the front door, and that's how you keep people out. This seems, if they want to put locks on these, and they're saying they do, fine, but I don't know why we would feel like we have to mandate how they secure the interior of their business. They're already securing the exterior, but, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm okay with the locking curtain mechanism, it's their level of security for their own shop owners. If it does become an issue, it's something that they're incentivized to fix this issue, and you'll only see those curtains for a closed business. Like the rolling metal locking doors aren't aesthetically more pleasing than the curtain. I think they both detract from, you know, stores being open, you want not to be present, but I'm okay with it because it does just put a burden on their tenants that they'd be incentivized to fix if it is a burden.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay, so.
So modification on that one.
I don't think there's one needed because it didn't specify exactly what type of, it just says consistent constructed method. Do we?
It does say that it's not going to be.
Such as doors.
It's not going to be consistent though, because some places are going to have this curtain, some places are going to have a glass storefront with a locking door. So. I guess that's my only concern, is that it's not, it's not really going to be consistent, do we, should we just?
Strike consistent?
Strike consistent and make it provide a constructive method to secure the entries, exits. Now, I guess my only other question is if. I'm thinking of, like, if there's a jewelry store and they have, their, all their merchandise is inside of a locked case, display case, do they need to have then something that locks even on front of that as well?
But part of the reason this is added is because of the variable business hours, so we wouldn't want to have nothing at all because then if the business was closed, people would still lock in it, not knowing that it was closed. So, you know, I think what, whether, I mean, the consistent issue, you know, if some people choose to upgrade, you know, that could be an option, if, but the, maybe the base option is consistent? The entry level option, the curtain option is consistent, and if people choose to upgrade, then that's an upgrade and.
that's an upgrade and that would be allowable.
Okay.
Yes, I was just gonna talk a little bit about the jewelry stores. The jewelry stores, because they do have vaults, some of them have alarms on it. They don't normally close their stores, they're surrounded by the showcases. So I really would like that to become as an option, if possible.
So they wouldn't have the curtain, is what you're saying?
Correct, correct. If they need to, they will, but I would prefer that they don't because all they're really unclosing is the showcases.
Okay, but what do you say to then, what she was saying, that how would I know if I'm walking through that that place is closed then, if there's no curtain closing at all?
Because there's nothing in the showcases. There are, there's no one in that store, and they're normally, they're turned off. So when the store's open, then the lights go on in the jewelry store with the showcases.
There's about, how many jewelry stores?
We have nine.
Okay. How many have curtains?
None.
There's... So there...
No.
He doesn't have curtains?
No, nobody does.
I actually prefer the no curtain look because I wasn't the biggest fan of it, but I understand locking for safety, so that doesn't bother me if businesses don't have it, that's up to them and their security, I think. I don't want to dictate that.
Yeah, to me, it's less of an aesthetic issue, it's a safety issue, so... Because the curtain, a metal gate, it's not an aesthetic issue, it's just, it's safety and security, so...
Well, if that's the case, then should we make this say that each unit shall provide a constructive method to secure merchandise rather than the entries? If that's the concern.
Do we even need to say that? Merchandise, what if we just strike it? Up to them.
I, I'm not comfortable totally striking it.
I don't know.
I don't know. Maybe say, secure merchandise and/or entries.
And/or entries.
And then at the end, such as blah blah blah, and locked curtains. I think because we've had such an extensive discussion on the topic, it's probably important to put both that as a function. Because maybe six months from now, someone's gonna say, what curtains was not in there? And then, so...
Right.
Okay, so each unit shall provide a consistent, no?
No.
Each unit shall provide a constructive method to secure the entries and/or merchandise?
Entries and exits and/or merchandise.
Okay. Entries and exits and/or merchandise to the individual units during closed and or off-hours of businesses, such as entry doors or overhead doors with locking mechanisms or locking curtains.
It's the entry doors or overhead door, entry doors, overhead doors, or locking curtains with locking mechanisms.
Or curtains with locking mechanisms, yeah, that was cleaner.
Okay.
The only thing that, the only tenants that wouldn't be able to lock up would be somebody equivalent to running a kiosk, let's say selling iPhone cases, where they don't have walls and they're just in the middle surrounded by cases, or a jeweler, or the restaurants. Like in the middle of Woodfield Mall. You have kiosks where they have drawers, and at the end of the day, they lock everything up, but during the day, everything's out in the open, there's a guy always walking around the area. And the restaurant's kind of equivalent to walking into a Chipotle, where, you know, once you're in the building, it's a pounder, you order here, it gets served there, and then sit down and eat. That would be difficult to do, you know, to the restaurant. The restaurant dimensions, I think, are about 75 feet wide.
But if it says also secure the merchandise, the kiosk will secure the merchandise, the envelope, or whatever, so that fits.
Okay. Hold on. How many of these kiosks are there?
Well, we're still in planning, we don't know. I mean, a handful?
Because we don't have any provision in here for those.
We actually say specifically kiosks are...
Saying no to that, because that would be outside of the, it would be in the core, like you're saying.
Yeah.
And that's in here as saying, no, you can't do that.
We don't have any kiosks at this time. Yeah.
So really, Bob, the question would be on the restaurants. What do we say about restaurants?
I mean, still secured merchandise, right? Does that fall under that category?
If I'm secure, because if it's a counter, I can just jump over it, you go over to counter.
I want to come back to that one and I'll ruminate on it.
Okay. We only got one more, so, go on there too. The owner shall complete the parking lot improvements as set forth in the application and related documents by September the 1st of 2023, and facade improvements as set forth in the application and related documents within 12 months of the indoor mall commencing operation. My only thought on these are, are these the dates that he, that the owner has given us, as his targets?
Yes.
So do...
Yes, on the phone, exactly. Yeah, me, you, and Chris?
Yeah.
And I said if I can't get material, or was it all due to a possible extension? And then you said it went up a year?
Yeah, and then it agreed, oh, come on.
After permit issue or mall opening? And what's the date you have on there?
We have a hard date of September 1st, 2023.
No, October 2023, 2023. So you want all that worked on by the, or a year after?
A year after.
Okay, I misunderstood. Yeah, a year after, right. Or it seemed like by October 1st.
It says within 12, yeah. Ah, just a...
Yeah. I got you, I'm ready to say, sure.
Yeah, the facade improvements as set forth in the application and related documents within 12 months of the indoor mall commencing operation.
And then in my memo, I said October 2023.
Okay. That's not how I read it in the package, just... I'm sorry? It's not how it read in the package, so we have by September 1st, 2023.
Is the parking lot improvements?
Yeah.
That's for September, the facade improvements are a year from opening date.
Cool.
Okay.
And that's what it said in the memo?
Yes, that's what's in there. Okay.
Okay. So that's okay as is. I added 16, each unit must have a unit or suite number.
I just wanted to just make comment on this. The definition, as Franco nicely pointed out to me a moment ago, the definition of indoor mall that you just approved in the special use, it's, says a retail complex over 500 square feet with one singular address. So I just want to be careful in this condition that we aren't creating additional addresses for any of these units. So we could say something like each unit has its own, is given some sort of designation or identifier, you know, or something of that note, but we're not creating addresses, which I don't think we are, because that's kind of a postal situation that you'd have to go through a process for.
Yeah, I thought I read somewhere in here that we were going with suites. Would that be a new address, or could it be the one address with just suite numbers?
I think I just, in the condition, if we just don't use the phrase address, if we can use, you know, some sort of designation...
This is what I said, each unit must have a unit and or suite number. Would that be okay, do you think?
I'm sorry, yeah, I think so, I'm sorry to get very technical on that, I just don't want to somehow get outside of our...
This is what we do, we're very technical.
We need the legal and technical stuff here, that's what we're here for.
They would not have their own individual addresses.
Yeah. How does that work at Springham Mall? Does each place have its own, like?
If they receive mail, then possibly, yes. But I don't know that they receive mail, so... They do. Each unit.
Yeah.
So they would not be receiving mail at this facility, we're not gonna assign addresses for each unit.
No, they would, they would get mail at their office and pass it out to their people, right?
Right.
The unit or identifier is just for chief police, so that if there's a...
And fire, so that they arrive, they know which unit to go to.
Yes, yeah, and I do think it's a good idea, I just want to make sure that we're all clear that we're not on that issue.
Somebody writes a letter to some, one of these shops and puts in there, because they know what the suite number is, that's not changing anything legally.
No, you would not.
What was said before was, mail comes and then they distribute it to the individual vendors.
If...
Those can be identified as A, B's, whatever.
Mail carrier's perspective, he's still gonna drop it off at your office, but it gives you that number that you can pass it out, gives chief the number that he can work with, everybody's happy.
Right. Beautiful.
No, I think there's absolutely no problem, I just want to make sure we didn't use the phrase address in the condition, because I didn't want to create this sort of legal issue that wasn't necessary to create.
We appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Can you just state it one more time?
Which one? The last provision? Each unit must have a unit and or suite number.
Perfect.
Okay. With a period at the end. All right, we're gonna go back to 14?
Yeah, so my suggestion was just to do a carve-out for restaurants, so just parentheses excluding restaurants.
Okay. Seems easy.
There's a beauty to that.
So it would read, each unit shall provide a constructive method to secure the entries and exits and/or merchandise to the individual units during closed and or off-hours of business, such as entry doors, overhead doors, or curtains with locking mechanisms, parentheses excluding restaurants. Period. Period.
Chief?
Chief.
I just, and I heard the applicant talk about, but I just want to make sure that that doesn't mean a locked glass case with jewelry in it. Because as we know, and I've had, been to many, a hammer through the jewelry case called.
Wow.
So if they do actually empty the cases and put them in a safe, that's great, but they have jewelry out in an open kiosk, just because it's in a locked glass case, is not secure.
Okay, how do you guys feel about that?
Overnight, I'm talking about when it's closed.
I think, just that for the jewelry stores, they take all the stuff out of the display anyway.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, so at the end of the night, all the jewelry that are in the showcases are put in the vaults.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Is there any other conditions that any board members would like to add?
Are we revisiting this after one year?
Yeah, how do we write that in?
To revisit?
I'd say that the applicant must present, the applicant must appear before the board on an annual basis to make a report on the financial operations, you know, parking, and if you want to be specific, or can just say to make a report on the operation of the...
I would say in one year. And then one year, we can decide if we want to make it another year, but maybe in one year, we're like, hey, everything's smooth. Like, we don't even talk about it again in a year.
Well, technically, well, these will be the conditions that are placed on the special use each year. You know, the report can come in, and if there's issues, they can be addressed, but you would have to amend the special use ordinance to create, to change that specific condition if you wanted it to occur again after a year, so...
Are we locked into doing it every year then, if we put it in there every year?
You know, you're a home rule, you're a government, you don't necessarily have to...
It would be enforced by us, so...
You could waive that requirement, it would be enforced by you.
Maybe I can help here?
Yeah.
We could say that the applicant will come back to the board and offer staff's report, and then it would be within the board's discretion whether or not to require future annual reports.
That's an option as well? Yeah, you can put that in, and then you can, so if you want to require one at 12 months, and then going forward, it would be at the discretion of the board to require an annual report.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
It's fine.
Yes.
Are there any other conditions that anybody has? Okay. Is there any other discussion that we need to have? Okay. So, I guess we've made that motion, we need to amend the motion with a few provisions added.
I can, I can try to do it. So it'd be a motion to amend the motion to approve the special use ordinance with the following changes to the conditions that were presented by the staff as follows. To revise condition 10, to only require litter patrol at least once per day, five days per week, to strike condition 11, to revise condition 14, to state that each unit shall provide a constructive method to secure the entries and exits and/or merchandise to the individual units during closed and or off-hours of businesses, such as entry doors, overhead doors, or curtains with locking mechanisms, excluding restaurants, and to add a condition that each unit shall have an individual suite or unit number, and to require an annual report after 12 months, and then annually, within the discretion of the board.
And item 10, also striking the extended 25 feet to the north and south?
Yes, and striking the 25 feet to north and south.
All right, then we just need somebody to say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
So we need to, this is a role to approve the amendment, not to approve the ordinance itself.
Okay.
So, Kathy, can you do that one?
Trusty Coonsey?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Tribber?
Yes.
And Trusty Sodder.
Yes.
Okay, and then now, we would take the role to approve the amended ordinance.
Do we need to make that motion?
That motion, sorry.
Okay, okay, thank you.
On the table.
Trusty Coonsey?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Tribber?
No.
And Trusty Sodder.
Yes.
All right. We're gonna go on, and I just wanted to say that anybody that doesn't want to stay here and listen to our yearly budget report... We are gonna continue with the board meeting, though.
Yeah, so...
I feel like all my noise is the minimum. Right now, we're gonna have a mid-year budget report presented by, who, Kathy Brandis? Wonderful.
It's good.
Hello, everyone. All right, I'll try to be brief. This is an overview of where we are financially, based on our fiscal year '23 budget. This report covers our May through December period. You can stop me at any time if you have any questions. Our year-to-date revenues are about 6.3 million, or 97% of our projected budget, and that's despite what we have thought may have been impacted by inflation. Our year-to-date expenditures are 4.6 million, or 71% of our budget, and we have about 1.7 or 8 million dollars of revenue variance compared to our expenditures. And we have 7 million in the bank, or 89% of our budget. This is just a list of kind of where we are with our general fund revenues, and I sectioned out everything by what's trending highs, mid-level, and low. everything by what's trending highs, mid-level, and low. So as you can see, our real estate or property tax are ninety-nine percent of budget. Sales tax for both home rule and regular sales tax are ninety percent or above. Income tax, automobile, personal property taxes are all great, and our amusement tax, which is Santa's Village, Paintball Explosion, those came in pretty high, and our streaming taxes is pretty high as well.
Can you do me a favor? What is, what would fall under the category of personal property replacement tax?
So that's anything that's outside of, like, property taxes, so anything that falls outside of that that also doesn't meet sales tax requirements.
Okay.
So, like machinery, things like that.
Okay.
Also trending high are building permits. I think we got a few...
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
These percentages are based on where we expect it to be right now, or where we expect it to be at the end of the year?
At the end of the year.
So when we say we're at a hundred and eleven percent of our sales tax revenue already?
Yes.
We're going to have a lot of excess.
Yes. Rental inspection, impact fees, those are based on permits, what we receive that may impact our police or admin or, what else?
Public.
Public works. So anything that may impact those departments based on our permits, we also have revenue for. Any questions on this?
What is the investment income line?
So we receive a percentage of whatever we have in the bank.
That's a million-dollar balance?
Over a million dollars, yeah. We have about seven million in one account that's, yes.
Seven million?
Yep.
Very good. These are great numbers.
So things that are on track, which means that we are at our benchmark for December at fifty-eight percent is where we should be. And these are some of the taxes that are trending on track and should meet or be near where we projected our end-of-the-year budget to be, so local use tax, franchise fees, and that's for like AT&amp;T, Verizon, things that, you know, we get franchise fees for, ComEd. Business license registration, DUI prevention, and rental income, which is something we talked about earlier. Items that are trending low is our utility tax. I think we are seeing that people are returning back to work and not working from home, so for the last two years prior, we had a pretty high utility tax income based on people working more from home, students being home, and that's trending lower now, so we will have to make adjustments for next year. Our telecommunication tax, which is what we receive for people calling nine-one-one on their landline phones. Truck parking tax, which we'll get into in another slide, is trending low. Liquor license and tow and other police fines.
Truck parking taxes is trending very low, is that just because we didn't know what to expect, what we said?
Kind of, but I'll address that a little in the next slide. Any other questions on this slide? So truck parking. We passed the ordinance when we adopted our budget back in April, and we did not implement truck parking tax until July, which we would have received revenue for in August. So some, about two of our vendors or businesses submitted taxes for July a little earlier. But we, as you can see, the trend was high, or it started high in August when we would have collected for July, and then in September, October, it kind of swayed a little bit, and then it went back up in November, and then in December, you can see it's trending lower again. One of the things that we are going to consider, based on the fact that this is our first year, we did not know what to expect, is perhaps conducting a six-month audit, or an audit in six months of some of our businesses, just to see what the trend is for their parking, truck parking in the area, and if they are reporting correctly. This is based on an audit system of sorts, so we're just taking the word of the business to report accurately. And we may also consider an increase in next year's budget. Any questions?
I was just to add to this. I would not have expected to see as much variability in this revenue line as we're seeing, and so for that reason, it makes me want to explore further what might be causing that. You know, so Brandis provided me with the individual businesses' remittances, and we want to sort of chart those out to see if there would be any explanation for ups and downs that would have some correlation to seasonality, like other business factors, but right now, we don't really have any explanation. So this is something we're going to keep a close eye on.
Is this the kind of thing that Abasada would help us with?
They did have a recommendation for how they would help with compliance with this, and so that was very intriguing, and, you know, they think that they could be very helpful with this, so that may be something we want to explore as we talk about the twenty-twenty-three stub-year budget.
Okay, so we are at about seventy-one percent of our budgeted expenditures for our general fund. As you can see, seventy-three percent of all of our expenditures are related to personnel, so that's salaries, benefits, insurance, things like that, and the other twenty-five percent or so is kind of scattered between our other categories. And this is just the breakdown of where each department is. As you can see, our police department, we love you, but they are our cost. And we'll talk a little bit about some of the reasons why police is trending a little higher. So we do complete our event season prior to the end of our fiscal year, so you'll see a lot of our expenditures for the community events line item, and some of our overtime related to those, to personnel working those events, also correlate with why we're trending a little higher for the benchmark we should be at. We also fully funded and paid our police pension contribution for the year. We pay it in accordance with how we receive our property tax revenue, so we receive it in June, July, and August, September. So we pay it in accordance to when we receive it.
We paid what we got from the property tax plus the difference?
We just pay what we budgeted so far.
The property tax?
Yes.
But that's reflected in the police line item, correct?
Yes.
So that's why seventy-eight percent of their budget has already been expended, because that doesn't just include their personnel expenses, it also includes the pension expense.
Correct. Another item that is impacting the police budget is part-time and overtime is exceeding our budget, and two of the reasons is due to increased presence at our village events, and also training and the time that it takes to train and hire new officers was not fully completed until earlier in this year. Any questions?
Does that second item suggest that this would be, we would have less overtime in the future?
We're hoping so. We have had some injuries, so that's also going to impact us as well with some officers being out and not being able to work, so feeling that with part-timers or overtime. Unfortunately, those are things that we can't predict.
Okay. Can the chief predict it?
You were gracious enough to give me two people last year. Those two people, as Brandis mentioned, didn't come on board basically to drive their own police car until January first, and then about two weeks ago, I lost two injuries, so I'm back to basically zero net gain again. So depending on how long it takes for them to recuperate or what goes on from there, and just as a reminder too, as far as the part-time issue, you know, the special events that we started covering, especially after what happened in Highland Park, and we covered all those events that generally hadn't been covered to the same extent, and in order to help try to pay for the two new full-timers, we reduced our part-time budget from one-twenty-five to the seventy-five. So historically, it had been a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year for the part-time budget, so...
Which, I mean, just for everybody's reference, we're not paying into their retirement if they're part-time, is that correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, part-time employees are valued to us.
Well, and I'll get, I'm going to get into that a lot more at our next board meeting when I look at, when I look at our activity, but you'll also see, I think there's a bigger conversation when it comes to cost-benefit analysis on the amount of hours we're actually getting from them, and the amount of expense that they do cost for training, when we eventually go to cameras, all the mandates that are required, uniforms, equipment. About the only thing you are saving is pension cost, otherwise, six part-timers, basically, you know, just, this is very quick, but just, I'll talk more about it in two weeks, equated to one FTE. So, yes, they are, but no, they're not. So that's, that's kind of the mixed message.
Yeah, and like Chief said, we will be budgeting higher for next year for that increased presence at village events because that's not changing.
Right.
Any other questions?
All right, so we did a brief swatch of where we are in our general fund, and as you can see, our revenues tied to any economic activities such as sales tax are exceeding our budget, as well as income tax, building permit, amusement tax, training tax are all trending higher than we had projected. Some of our weaknesses are our low trending revenues such as utility tax and truck parking tax. Those are things that we'll just have to keep an eye on and make sure we're following the trends, but also paying attention to what's happening in the world. And as we already talked about, police overtime and part-time costs, which we'll address and properly budget for in the coming year. Some of our activities, our opportunities are our economic development opportunities, new businesses coming into town, and also being near fully staffed for each department, which has been severely lacking in the prior year or two, and being able to operate at greater efficiency and effectiveness. Some of our threats are just potential nationwide economic crisis, which we can't predict, and also inflation.
Any questions?
So this is just an overview of some of our other funds. This includes all of our TIF and DDDs, our street MFT, and also our capital projects funds. As you can see at the end of the chart, our year-to-date variance is almost one million dollars under, and one of the, a couple of the reasons why we have not done any transfers to help offset some of our bond payments that we would have completely made as of December, and that would kind of help balance out some of those funds. We also have Build Speedway for their portion of our new Christina Drive signal. We have not received funding for that yet in its entirety, and that's about nine hundred thousand dollars. We also have not received Cook County property taxes, which I am not sure when we will receive. They kick their ball out and do what they want, so hopefully before the end of the fiscal year, we will have that money, but that's also another six or seven hundred thousand dollars that we will be adding to our budget.
You're saying the Cook County property tax will be six hundred thousand dollars?
About, for our North Cook County TIF, yes. We also get a small portion, maybe about ten thousand dollars, which goes into our police pension fund. All right, and so finally, we'll look at our water sewer fund. Our revenues here are two point three million, or eighty-nine percent of budget. Our expenditures are two point four million, or seventy-four percent of budget, and we have about two point four million as our cash. Keep in mind that we did do some pretty major projects this year, and we tapped into our cash reserves to kind of balance out and pay for those things. We did complete our water tower painting project. We did the lift station improvement on Hill Street, and we are in the beginning stages of designing the Water Street, Water Main project, and have replaced a number of landline services, including two residential, and we have started and... and completed the demolition of four oh eight Barrington Water Pumping Station.
So all those expenses are already figured into these numbers?
Pretty much, yes. Except for the Water Street design project, we're still kind of paying that yet. Any questions on the water sewer fund? Any other questions?
So general takeaways are glad that we budgeted conservatively, given that we had some sense that there would be continued inflation, so revenues are trending high, which is good, we don't have to worry, but we will want to continue to take a look at those revenues and see if we can sort of right-size them so that for next year, we're still looking at any headwinds, but also trying to be as realistic as possible. But overall, you know, nothing to worry about on the revenue side. Expenses coming in pretty much where we expected, and we have adequate revenues over what we budgeted to account for those trending high expenses, so we don't have to worry about that either, so we're in a good place as it stands for the middle of fiscal year.
All right. Very good. Any other questions? Okay. So, on to D. Can I get a motion for item D?
Make a motion to approve a resolution approving the purchase of ductile iron pipe from Core Main in the amount of forty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the Water Street Water Main project.
Okay. Phil, do you want to talk about what we're buying here?
So our, excuse me, our design consultant had mentioned that there may be some shortages in some of the products this coming construction season, particularly as it relates to water main projects and supplies, and so we reached out to a couple of vendors, and they confirmed that they are already receiving orders for their projects this year, and thought that it's, if we want to avoid delays to our project, it's best to secure this high-demand product, particularly the eight-inch diameter ductile iron pipe, and so we're interested in, or seeking approval to purchase that, our vendors said that they would have it delivered to our site if approved this evening, as early as Wednesday this week. Also mentioned too that the design phase is essentially complete, so the advertising of bids will begin tomorrow. Opening bids in three weeks, award shortly thereafter, and then construction May-ish, and completion sometime July-ish.
And that's for this Water Street Main project?
Correct. So that's the installation of a new water main between Railroad and North Street, where there currently is not a water main there presently. So this is adding a new water main to connect... So essentially, there's one main that serves the entire flat neighborhood, and it comes down Barrington Avenue, so this will provide a second supply to that area of the village.
Okay.
Can I ask where you're going to put the pipes?
Right now, we're looking at one of two places. Either the public works garage
Yep.
or out in front of the admin building at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
So we're, the objective is to secure it and tarp it to make sure that it's not visible to the...
Yes, please.
To the general public. We don't want it to walk. So...
So then...
It is a lot of pipe, I'm sorry?
Question about where the pipes go in, like, currently, there's a water main on Barrington, and then it will tee at this and then go up Water Street, or where would this go exactly, or who would it improve the waterfall? Or who would it improve the water for? Like, that whole Flats neighborhood would see improvements?
Correct, yes. So we do have, so the water main comes down Barrington, and there is a water main that extends down to Water Street, but it's a dead end essentially. So what this will do is, it'll connect Railroad to North, but then also tie in at Barrington as well. So there will be essentially three connections to the new, to the new main.
Will we see a presentation on this when the design is done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Provide a map and?
Great.
Yes, yeah, most certainly.
Yeah, this is a very high-priority project that Phil and I have been working on since basically the second day I started. It will greatly improve water quality, and it will provide that continuous flow of, and loop so that there is no more dead ends, um, and that will mitigate, um, some issues that we've experienced in the past. And that will be, um, there's one other section of the community that we also have to address this issue at, but it's much more complex.
And what section is that?
Forgot what you, your pen name is for it. What, what is it, the one where there's the backyard dead ends?
Oh, the terrace.
Yes.
Yes.
So the, the only other area where we have similar issues is in the terrace, and it's because the public infrastructure exists in people's private backyards, which is inherently difficult for us to access, uh, without disrupting people's lives.
You're welcome in my backyard.
Right.
It's for water.
So, once we complete this project, well, once this project goes out to bed, we'll immediately start working on the next project because, uh, also a high priority. Um, but something that's long overdue and glad that we're getting, making progress on it.
Thank you for your effort. I know we, Sarah, Andy, I can all vouch for the Flats community. Thank you very, very, very much for your effort on this, so we're, we'll relay it proudly.
Yes. Um, I've, I've been thinking about this water issue, and I wonder, how do we feel about doing a full village survey of how people feel about their water quality? To kind of identify if we have areas that are, that maybe we don't know are, are problems?
Is that a question for the board or the staff?
Well, it's on me.
I would suggest doing it after the completion of this project.
Agreed.
Okay. Yeah, to see how this, you know, works, that's fine.
Especially if it's a, hey, have you noticed an improvement in your water in the last, you know?
Yeah. I think that if you ask the question of people, they're going to say, well, three years ago I had this issue, and you, I don't know how you phrase it so that we don't get that because that's not really helpful, but.
Yeah, I would be happy to do that. I think it would be pretty valuable.
Okay.
And there's a couple of areas in town where we have received some calls about water quality, maybe odors and maybe discoloration.
Right.
And they're kind of designated pockets. It's not necessarily village, there are different areas in the village, but they're concentrated to certain areas.
Right.
You kind of have an idea, general ideas to why, and this particular project will help address what's happening in the Flats area as well, certainly.
Good.
And this recommended purchase will help prevent the delays of this project.
Right.
If you want to make sure that we're in a position to start this, come May.
Mm-hmm. It's amazing. All right. Any other questions?
One question, on this one, when we do install these pipes, when they are torn up, is there an advantage to, like, as we identify lead service into people's homes, to link in programs while it is all torn up?
We have.
I know you're talking about looking into that already, but?
Yes, for this project, we have discussed that. Um, I believe there are approximately five homes that will connect to the new main, and so they're currently connected off of Barrington or North, perhaps even Railroad, and possibly even Second Street as well. We have five homes that we don't know for sure if all five are lead, but we're prepared to make those connections, and we've had conversations on how to, how to address that, if and when that occurs.
Okay.
Awesome. No other questions about these pipes?
It's unusual to do this, to, to purchase the pipe, kind of standalone ahead of the project, but, again, in our supply and demand climate, it's?
Pipe is pipe though, right?
Highly recommended. High, and pipe is pipe, but in high demand.
Yes. Okay. All right. Okay, Catherine?
Trustee Coonty?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes, please.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sotter?
Yes.
All right, our last, uh, item is item E. A motion for item E.
Sure. I will make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing execution of a real estate sale agreement and sale of real property of two and four North Van Buren Street and East Undy, Illinois.
Second. Okay. Well, um, just to let anybody listening and the residents know, these are the two houses on Van Buren, uh, if you are driving north on Van Buren, pass Route seventy-two on the right side as you first turn onto Van Buren. Um, we're, we're looking to purchase both of them, and the end game for those properties is to be determined. Um, we haven't decided, but we're just trying to get control over them so they don't continue to kind of fester, because they're both in pretty rough shape, so.
Hopefully, we'll have a, uh, improved sidewalk situation there at some point.
Yeah, improved safety at the intersection and less restrictive turning on red and such.
Yep.
Right. Um, there's, are there no tenants in them at this time, or is there still one there?
Uh, my understanding is that they're both vacant.
Yeah, okay, good. Just not displacing anybody. All right. Uh, does anybody have any questions on this? We've, I know we've talked it to death, so.
No.
All right, Catherine?
Trustee Coonty?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sotter?
Yes.
All right. Uh, on to reports. Uh, Andy, do you have a report?
Um, yes. I was gonna report that the Distance Social had their ribbon cutting. They've been open one year. Uh, there were several trustees in attendance, and they're, they're doing a great job in adding a lot of value to the town, so congratulations to them. And then, wanted to mention Free Inn has, has great breakfasts. I've been there at least three times in the last month, but if you haven't been yet, they're still fairly newly opened. Uh, they do a great job with breakfast, so. Um, the lead pipes, uh, I did check my home today just to verify that we do have a lead service line to the, to the supply to the house. Um, so, talking with Phil and trying to figure out ways, uh, to identify programs to help similar resident issues of just like getting rid of that little section of lead pipe, so very excited about what Phil and his team is doing. But, that's all.
Awesome. Tricia?
No report.
Rich?
No report.
Um, I will just say, you know, back to this water issue, uh, I had a vision of how that would work. This survey would be like mail out the survey to everybody in the town with like a postage-included return envelope, and then if they want to go online, maybe you put the address on there to they can do it online, or they could fill it out because some people don't have internet or know how to use it properly, and they can mail it to us, or I guess they could drop it off at, uh, Village Hall as well. Um, so that's just my thought on how that could be administered. Um, not that anybody asked.
Flying taste tests with us doing taste tests.
All right. Uh, I don't have any other.
Sarah?
Uh, Sarah?
Um, just looking for a quick update on the snow parking thing that we talked about in the last meeting.
Do you want to give that or you have?
All of the three inch signs have been updated with two-inch. We put a little two on the sticker to cover up the three, so those are, those have been, those were completed last week. Uh, we've received, uh, we've taken delivery of the new signs that will restrict the parking to one side of the street. So now it's a matter of essentially getting the formal word out and then installing the signs, which will take time. And make sure we have to do our jewelry locates before we can install the signs and make sure we have, have each street strategically, um, signed and so on and so forth, so, um, we're moving along.
What kind of, uh, lead time would be on these signs? I mean, it's a lot of signs, I would imagine.
We're looking at, well, at least two probably per block. So we've got, we ordered forty signs, so we may be able to use existing sign posts. Some will require new sign posts altogether, so, um, I think, hopefully we'll get out with weather permits this week and start locating actual sign indications.
Oh, so we have, all right, good.
If the ground isn't frozen, we'd be able to get some signs in the ground.
Right, just waiting for that March snow that we always get.
Right, right. I've asked Phil not to put the signs up until we've done adequate education.
Yes.
Because I don't want people to be surprised when they see the signs, so we'll start with newsletter, Facebook, et cetera. Um, and we talked about putting something on the water bill, so you'll start to see lots of communication go out about it.
Great. Good, thank you.
Uh, okay, and then we'll go on to staff. Erica, or, I'm sorry.
You can call me Erica.
Okay, yeah. What, uh, do you have a report?
I do have a report tonight, so, uh, Brandis and I have been reviewing, uh, different staff's responsibilities and roles within the organization as we've sort of shuffled things around over the past year since I started. Um, and so tonight, I'm happy to announce that Catherine is now our special events coordinator, um, still our village clerk, but also our special events coordinator.
Yay!
Congratulations. More accurately reflects the level of responsibility and the, the, uh, actions that she does on a daily basis to make our town amazing. So thank you, Catherine. And then Franco is going to now be our assistant to the village administrator. Uh, that is a little level up from management analyst, so I'm very excited that he's continuing to grow in his position and making great contributions to the village.
Okay.
Uh, and the last one we did is Gail, uh, in her building division. She is now the building and public works assistant. Uh, so that is a more modern term for what used to be, uh, a, a secretarial, some, some outdated title that is no longer reflective of her, her roles and her contribution to the village. So those three, uh, we also updated email signatures from, and I'm very appreciative of all of them.
All right, very good.
Congratulations to everybody.
And even everybody that didn't get a new title also.
Yes, thank you!
Okay. Uh, our village attorney?
No report.
No report. Uh, building partner?
I do have one thing. ETS started their phase one and their, uh, so, so investigations today.
Yeah, we did see some people out there.
They finished all their drilling, and they'll be back into our, Wednesday to do the final, uh, investigation on the inside of the building.
Okay.
Um, and it takes, takes about, uh, probably a month, twenty more, two days, until the three quarts is completed.
Okay.
Very exciting.
That's impressive, given how long those are. All right, good.
That's it.
Uh, Chief?
Uh, just to let you know, at the direction of the village administrator, we procured two perfectly mounted speed signs that are gonna be installed, uh, once for Barrington Avenue, uh, for the inbound traffic, for the, uh, westbound traffic on Barrington Avenue, right about where the, the, uh, well is, where our drivers, the well, you come there, there's electric in there, and one for Route seventy-two between, somewhere between Van Buren and sixty-eight.
These are the, like, the your speed signs?
Correct.
Didn't we have those already?
We had a, we had a mobile one that we put up at residential West.
Oh, 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 these are like permanent ones that are gonna go on the sign forever?
Right. And hook them on down the falls for our consumers' concerns about, uh, speeding down Barrington Avenue for, uh, for residents to help, uh, curtail that, uh, along with seventy-two and they see, West W actually has one for it as well. Uh, it's just west of their little town.
Uh, but the one that had the most complaints, I thought, was, uh, uh, Water Street.
So right now, they're, they're, we're doing a speed analysis, or, uh, Phil has been working with them, and then you're doing a speed and truck analysis for the area to see what the, what issues make.
All right, so we're still working.
I see road trips associated with that study came on in Grandwater, Barrington.
Okay.
And then, uh, two other quick things. One is, I hope to have my first, uh, annual report to you by, to the coordinator and back to you by about mid-March. Just waiting on some data, last minute data, if you want to finish my report. And then just, uh, uh, to really thank the board for your support and everything. Uh, the last board meeting, all I was up here was my first year anniversary of my appointment, and I really appreciate it. It's been a great first year, and thank you to all of you, the administrator, staff, for this first year.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations on your one-year anniversary, absolutely, yes. All right. Uh, Phil?
Laura Williams.
Okay. Brandis?
Um, yeah, we're working on budgets, so in the next one or two agendas, we may see something for those workshops, so, I need you ready.
As a personal favor, can that be a light agenda, except we need to touch our workshop?
We'll do our best.
Usually that's its own meeting, a special meeting, a very special meeting. Okay. And Franco, no reports. Okay. Uh, do we have, I don't exactly have a question for that.
I have one brief item.
And which, uh, which category would that be?
Acquisition of property.
All right, so we need a motion to go to executive session for C five.
I will make a motion to go into executive session, close to the public and media under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, five ILCS, one-twenty slash two, C five, acquisition of property, and we will not be coming back into public session, adjuried from there.
What was the other one?
Uh, C sales.
Sale of property. Okay, let me, let me amend that to say C five, acquisition of property, and C six, sale of property.
Second.
Trustee Coonty?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sotter?
Yes.
All right, well, that'll be coming?
We'll do a quick, so no break. It'll be very brief, all.
Yeah.